Order in the court. At this time, we're going to call the Edgefield County Planning Commission West Session to order for April the tenth, twenty twenty-three. At this time, we are ordering, uh, if it's okay with everybody on the panel board here, I want to go to, uh, new business first. You know, we go back to the old business in order to, uh, to consider time to not get tied down on something. So we're gonna go to new business. That'd be item number three. Land development application submitted by Blue Sky Development LLC, product one twenty-five, double out, double out, zero six seven, triple out, one twenty-five, double out, double out, zero one three, triple out, and one twenty-five, double out, double out, zero five seven, triple out. At this time, uh, I have to give a brief overview of the proposal, and then we have, it's, anyone here representing Blue Sky? At this time, uh, you come up and take a seat there. Good to see you, fellas, man.
I'm Stuart Thompson.
David Thompson.
Alrighty, uh, staff, you have anything on the focus that on it? Now.
Alright, so, um, if you look up on the screen, you'll see the, uh, map. Uh, you're all, y'all have all been in the office and gone over this plat with us before, so you're aware of what it is. It is a major subdivision with one hundred and twenty-six townhome lots, which is divided up in this little section over here. And then a hundred and twenty-eight single-family lots, uh, with mixed price points. These are thirteen thousand, five hundred square foot lots here, or thereabouts. Some of them are bigger. Uh, so a little over quarter acre. These are um, almost half-acre lots. Some of them are a little over half-acre on this road. This is not part of the development, and this is not part of the development. And this right up here is an emergency easement for fire EMS, police, et cetera. Um, and this is the main entrance right here that connects to Stevens Room.
Okay. Alrighty, uh, we're gonna do, uh, the other presentation staff here, we've seen it. Now I'm gonna, I think question from the, uh, panel. You have a question, quick. Any question, comment on it, on this, uh, I had a chance to look on this subdivision.
Yeah, can you make comments on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, so I, I looked closely at the design and, and the roads. Um, I feel like with all the cul-de-sacs and the dead ends and the, you know, having to go in and out, the design just doesn't really promote um, community within there because if you have someone living at the end of, let's say, the long cul-de-sac that, that circles around the one in the middle, um, you know, to go see a neighbor, there's no continuity in there. They're gonna have to go back out of that cul-de-sac, back out to the main entrance or one of the main roads, and then loop back down. Um, and then the, the U shape where the townhouses are. Um, you know, it's, it's a dead end. I just feel like that traveling in and out and around that neighborhood, it's just, seems very disconnected to me and doesn't really promote that being a unified neighborhood. So I don't know. I mean, my first look at it was, I don't feel like it was designed to, to really consider the quality of life of people living in that plat. It looks more like it was designed for how many lots can we get in here? What's the best design to get the most amount of lots in here? And not really thoughtful of the people living there being in some type of unified neighborhood together. That, that's just my thoughts on the plan of the plat.
Did you get a copy of the PowerPoint that we prepared for this?
A copy of what?
We prepared a PowerPoint, um, prior to all this, I don't know.
I didn't see it.
Uh, we actually designed the subdivision. If you look at the end of the cul-de-sac by the retention pond, there's a gap between the lots for trails and such to be put in so people can hike and whatnot. But it also provides quick access from that cul-de-sac back up to the entrance of that way. And we have that throughout the subdivision to promote that, um. So that was a thought process put into this, to make it a community, to have things and amenities for the people who live in it, or opportunity for them. And so that, that was a thought process when we were designing it.
Um, I, I, I see that for walking, but, uh, and, and walking's great. But I'm thinking, you know, I'm a neighbor over here, and there's a neighbor in need over there on, on the other street, and I wanna take a meal to him. You know, I'm, I'm having to get in my car, go out, and then circle around and come back in. Like, there's, I can't just, like, take a back route through the neighborhood to go from one cul-de-sac over to the other. I'm having to go back out of the neighborhood and then come back in.
Safety was also a concern when we were designing it, and having single entrances to each section does promote safety for things such as theft.
Traffic.
Traffic.
Traffic. Well, again, I, I just, I would prefer to see more connectivity planned within the neighborhood for traffic.
I, um, I went to, uh, Lexington County, over in Chaping, you know, the two subdivision, they, I've been watching them, you know, checking them. And they, they designed almost, at first I looked at it, it didn't make sense, then when I went through it and rolled through it and watched them put up the, which about completed now. It was, it was a fairly good design, the way, and it designed almost, they got two of them designed almost, that off of two seventy-six. You know, it was well-designed like this, and they end up, and look, almost, almost exactly, it was a detention point over there, and everything, you, you went in, I went to, you know, these property here and looked, and I went, well, I've been to most of them. It, it's designed, I think, fairly well, and what we got here.
One of, one of the other things that we did try to do, because initially I did have a drawing where mo-most of it was connected, but we really, you know, our design, it has a thirty percent green area. So we have almost, uh, well, twenty-five acres or so of green area, walking trails, open area. You know, there's area there that's big enough to have, you know, a nice park, things like that. There's plenty of there, and there's access. And except for a handful of lots, which are in the second cul-de-sac, uh, the third cul-de-sac, uh, go up a little bit, right in there. Um, and, and on the other side, there's thirty to fifty feet of, uh, green area between the back property lines of each property, except there, and there's about ten to fifteen there.
Now, where, where that emergency egress on there? Let me see where.
We're coming off Stevens Road.
Alright, that's it, right there, okay, 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 good.
Uh, we're coming off Stevens Road, about a thousand feet.
Right, right.
And it is our plan to keep it much like it is other than having an asphalt. It's one thousand three hundred fifty-one point eleven feet. And, uh, let's see, and then we got the emergency exit, which, you know, not really a, a so-called, I don't believe it's a requirement, but with the Mill Creek, it's incident back a year or two ago. It, it makes a big difference.
The fire code, if you've got more than thirty units, you need to, you got to have a way for fire EMS and police to get in. Um, it does not have to be an open thoroughfare, so the residents are not required to be able to use it. It can have a gate and a knock box or something like that on it, um, strictly for police, fire, and EMS. And that's in case, you know, if lot twenty-seven right here were to catch fire, and you've got three fire trucks right there, and then EMS gets another call, and someone in lot one fourteen had a heart attack, that, that ambulance has still gotta be able to get to one fourteen. So that's, that's where that emergency easement comes in, because it gives them a secondary way to get a emergency crew in there if something were to block the primary.
The distance between the back of the townhomes and the, and the U, that's about a hundred and fifty feet. And that particular area is basically on grade. You know, it's very level, so it's a very usable space.
And even though it doesn't show it on here, we did discuss at one point, all of this is buffered, correct?
Yeah, good, okay.
I think we have a fifty-foot buffer, uh, between all neighboring properties. Set right down there, there's one lot that is kind of tight, right at the end of, right up by the retention pond. A little, right, right there.
Right, yeah, okay.
And we, we're working with Mr. Hathaway. I haven't talked to him, but through Jim Miller, which talks to him a lot, you know, that's why that road is sitting right there without a cul-de-sac that little part, because Mr. Hathaway may want a access to his property, because I believe he lives on it now, and he's having to go way around.
Is this emergency easement, um, road, is that gonna be paved?
No, it will stay dirt just like it is.
Do you plan on turning over the roads to the county?
That is the plan today. What reason I say that, uh, there, you know, if we don't turn the roads over to the county, then our HOA fees have to be much, much higher. But there is many rules and regulations we have to follow to get to that point, which takes, in this case, this, it'd be three, four years. So, you know, because you have to sell, well, it's about seventy-five percent of lots, you know, and then we have to post a bond for two more years.
Right.
And then it's turned over. So we'll be maintaining all the, you know, grassy areas, easements, and et cetera.
I was under the impression that the EMS or the emergency road would be gravelled.
Yeah, gravel, dirt. It's not paved.
Not paved, but gravelled is different than dirt.
And we will make sure, and I'm sure Doc will make sure, we make sure that it is passable for the pro, the equipment that needs to pass it.
The one thing, and the primary reason that we don't wanna require this to be paved, and I have had this conversation. There's a house, there's a person that lives here on this lot who accesses down this. We don't wanna make it a thoroughfare. We don't wanna make it something that people are using.
Right, I just didn't want it.
We don't, we don't wanna infringe on that person, so if, if you put a paved road in there and connect it around, this, this guy's gonna have traffic all the time going through there. So gated off, put a knock box on it for the police department, fire department, EMS, whatever. Um, and then, you know, just, I leave this a gravel road headed out to Stevens.
So gravelled?
But, you have a name?
No.
I'm good.
Any more?
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm sure y'all can see, I'm sure Doc has told you, y'all are aware that this is not compliant with the comprehensive plan as far as density. Have you talked to Doc about that and possibly modifying your plan to fit in with our comprehensive plan?
We have discussed it, and we've done everything we can do.
I wouldn't say you've done everything you can do, because it's not in compliance.
We have, we have to, uh, when it comes to the, the money we have to put out to put all the sewer system in, all the stormwater, all the roads and all that, and then we have to give them, you know, to the municipality. Um, we are trying to keep the cost of overall building down. And it starts here. And, uh, if we were to go to a, uh, two hundred and fifty or, or, I mean, to a hundred and ninety or so unit, probably wouldn't happen. Or either you couldn't, the average person couldn't afford a house.
Well, I understand this is unzoned, um, but, you know, our, our comprehensive plan is our guidance, and I would prefer to see developments coming in that comply with our comprehensive plan. That's just my opinion.
We'll take that as, as in consideration, but we prob, we will not be changing our plan.
Okay.
Um, we did comply basically with the comprehensive plan in a future, uh, past subdivision. And, you know, we know that, uh, not everybody can afford a five hundred thousand dollar house. And we're trying to get this down, we're trying to keep it down. Because there's a lot of people in this, uh, county that wanna live in this county that can't afford.
Well, I, I've seen plenty of new construction homes on larger, well, about that size lot. Uh, and they are starter homes, and they're two fifty to two eighty. So you don't have to put a half a million dollar home in there.
Right, but see, if you make your lots bigger, that's the only way we do it, then the lot, the, the price of the hot, lots are gonna go up.
Well, I, I understand, but I've, I've, you know, I've, I'm, I'm aware of starter homes on the same-sized lots that are at two fifty, two eighty price range.
So your thought point, one seventy-five, Abby?
One seventy-five would be the townhouses.
Yeah, that's townhouse, I thought, okay. Same as two fifty.
I believe they have three price points in here, right? You have town hall, you have townhouse lots, then they have this, uh, twenty-six lots of large acre lots, those are gonna be more comparable to, like, Anderson Point.
That is correct.
Um, and then the remainder is similar to, like, Sweetwater Landing.
Mm-hmm.
Side.
After talking to Doc, it seems that we ran the numbers on the detached housing, and it seemed like those numbers were suitable. It seemed like the numbers that came into play that raised the cards were the townhouse numbers. Um, if I understand correctly, it was thirty acres with all the townhouses.
There at about. So our ordinance requires townhouses to be less than six units per acre, they're at about four point eight on the townhouses. Um, the overall development is at two point five units per acre. So if you add everything together, all the lots together, all the units together, it's at two point five units per acre.
And there's no way you can come down off of those townhouse numbers.
At this point, do y'all have a complete transportation study?
Not yet, we're working on that with the SC DOT as we speak.
Okay, what about the schools? Have we done a school study on this?
The school does that, not us.
Have, have they done that?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I, I am wondering what DOT is gonna say about that curve on Stevens Road, just.
It's not gonna be a problem, we have to have three hundred and fifty feet, it's like, it's within, the speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. I believe to that curve is about five hundred feet.
And Stevens Road is set to be paved, uh, next year, is that not correct? Possibly.
I'm gonna say it this way, um, I'm also the CTC director, so I do approve funds for, for roads as well. The county, so the state came in and they had a plan to pave half of Stevens Road. Well, obviously, from a county viewpoint, paving half the road is completely pointless, that you're, you're, that, why are you gonna pave half the road? So the C-Funds Board authorized an additional appropriation, um, for the county to pay the remainder of the road. So the entire road will be paved. However, because of the tremendous influx of cash from the delegation in infrastructure, the entire state is flooded with road construction work. The supply for things like cement is really tight. And projects are starting to show up years in advance, rather than months in advance. So I can tell you that the funding to pave the road has been appropriated and assigned. Um, and it is sitting in a interest-bearing account, drawing interest right now. It could be next year, and then next year DOT could come to us and say it's going to be the next year. I mean, I can't give you DOT's schedule because they haven't given me a final schedule, but it's paid for. We're just waiting on contracts to be let.
Well, I understand you meet the minimum distance from that curve, but the, the entire Stevens Road is curvy. I feel like it's the most dangerous road in the Merryweather area. Um, so adding, what, fifteen hundred trips a day to that road concerns me. So I'll be interested in seeing what South Carolina DOT says about that, you know?
So for
How that's gonna affect it?
Just for public info, and, uh, I've talked to some of you, uh, you came in and asked me questions regarding final platage. This preliminary process, of course, does not include all of that engineering, as it would be tremendously expensive. But before they can get a final approval to actually start building, all of that has to be done. DOT approval has to be gotten, DEHEC approval has to be gotten, their environmental stuff has to be done, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, as planning commissioners, you can show up and review those documents at any point in time of your choosing. Typically, the final plat process does not come back to the planning commission unless something in that engineering necessitates a serious change. So, for example, um, they, uh, have to completely redesign their entryway, put four lanes in, or they have, you know, some major change or event where their plan is significantly altered. Then before that final plat process, and that's the process that allows them to actually sell a lot, then they would have to come back. Typically speaking, it usually doesn't come to that. If anything, after the engineering process, developments usually get smaller, not larger. Um, you know, they find a wetland, or they find a spot that, you know, is just not buildable because of topography, or whatever the case may be. They usually lose lots, they don't gain them. So typically, you won't see the final plat, but you are always entitled to come and review all of their paperwork. So when their SWEAP gets submitted, you'll be able to see it, their civil drawings, you'll be able to see it, their approval from DOT, and anything that their traffic study mandates them to do for approval, you'll be able to see that. That is also public info, so once that stuff gets submitted to me, it goes into their file. Anybody can come in and ask to see that file. Um, we are not the authority having jurisdiction for DOT, so for Stevens Road, for example. If Stevens Road says, hey, you gotta look at these six intersections, and these are the improvements you have to make, they have to do it, or they don't get a curb cut to enter their property. Um, so it, if DOT does give them an improvement list, and they choose not to do it, that's a project killer. They don't have access. Because DOT being the authority there, they have to meet that encroachment requirement. Obviously, the Thompsons have developed before, this is not new to them. But that traffic study, once DOT gets it, they will do it, do a whole list of, these are the conditions for our approval. And DEHEC is sort of the same, so once they submit their civils, DEHEC will go through a SWEAP review, which is Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. Um, and they'll check all of their environmental things, and they too will get a list of, these are the changes you need to make to your plan to, to meet our requirements. Again, if they don't meet those requirements, that kills the project, they can't move forward. They have to negotiate with all of those other entities after they negotiate here.
Any more, right?
Question. So I asked Doc, I said, in Edgefield, do we have any other major subdivisions that have a mixed-use element? And the answer was no. Because my thought is, you're bringing to me a major subdivision when you really should be bringing to me a PD. PD allows for mixed use, and this is a mixed use. Um, that's my thought, and I don't know why you brought it as a major subdivision versus a PD, because literally that is, is what a PD is.
Because it's unzoned.
Unzoned.
We're following your requirements.
I get that, I get that. I get that.
At the end of the day, there's no use restriction on the property. You could have put Trump Tower in the back of it.
But you live in this county, so I'm kinda disappointed. But it's my fault, I take it. I own it. But we're gonna work on fixing it. I own it, we're gonna fix it.
Okay, any more comment? If not, uh, you know, we're gonna bring this up in the meeting, we'll vote on it in the meeting. This is our West Section, I appreciate it. Okay, we, um, going back to old business. And we've been discussing a lot on prior to the change of comprehensive plan, ordinance, and so forth, that, uh, right now, I'm gonna let the vice have the floor.
First, I wanna state that in no way, shape, or form do I, as a planning commissioner, want to see Edgeville County change in its beauty and its charm. If you ask any other commissioner, they don't either. My comments arise from frustrations more than anything else. As a planning commissioner, I've taken this position very seriously, I listen intently. I have read the comp plan over and over and over. I have watched hours of council meetings, of planning meetings. I've spent the past two and a half weeks hyper-focused on issues and solutions. There's too much focus on stopping something than there is on planning to prevent something. Poor planning on your part does not constitute an emergency-type of situation. If there's knee-jerk reaction without hearing facts, then nothing constructive can come from this. You cannot change the fact that North Augusta area is growing and expanding, here's a few facts. North Augusta has grown thirty-nine percent since two thousand. North Augusta is also growing moderately quickly, it's growing faster than seventy-seven percent of similarly-sized cities since two thousand. A twenty first appeared between nineteen sixty-four and nineteen sixty-seven. Then, from the Georgia State line, it was completed in sixty-seven. So the linked growth is there to that point, and none of this is news. During one of our meetings back in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, Roger stated that seventy-five percent to eighty percent of this county would remain unzoned. Only in suburban areas of the county you will find zoning. Also stating that because of some concerns that some property owners have, this area needs to be protected with zoning. Please note the word protected. During meetings, I've heard residents speak about living on the Martin Town Road Expressway, stating they wanted the rural setting, not to be in the big town. Also saying no one they've talked to wanted zoning. Upon looking at the area in which they live, it's a cul-de-sac with visible homes around them, also a paved road. Possibly when you're buying property so close to an already developing area within less than a ten-minute drive to shopping, the term rural comes into question. When we purchased our property, when you turn off the main road, we When we purchased our property, when you turn off the main road, we see no one else. From any direction, we see no other property. When driving down our dirt road, there are no other houses around us. It takes thirty minutes for me to get to the grocery store or to buy necessities. I would say that's rural. Could that change? Yes, it could. But the infrastructure's not there right now, but it could be. So, what brings us to this point? Stevens Road, unzoned property. One of the planning commissioners stated during one meeting she had been collecting signatures of people who were against zoning. No one's seen that letter, but she stated she knows people don't want it. So, she went on to state that no amount of zoning would protect against the highest density development that there is, and that's PD. Planning Commission has worked on ordinances and upped the requirement to a limit of six houses per acre, but that doesn't, doesn't sound rural to her. She further states the reason no zoning will protect you against PD is that it's a rezoning by going before the planning commission. Further stating, the only kind, only thing that kinda protects you is the lack of water and sewer availability. That statement's false. If a developer has enough money, they can run water lines, they can run sewer lines. So, they can move on with the project. Doc replied, the PC can, planning commission, can in fact stop a PD without cause. When someone's asking for a rezoning, there's no obligation of the planning commission or county council to approve them. So, there is protection in place against a PD. So, beating this dead horse is a moot point. We no longer need to go there, but we do month after month. After further discussion on PDs and other areas, Doc stated, the state law has a section in it that allows the developer to basically ignore your decision if the comp plan is what you based your decisions on. So, there's a legal, there's a loophole. And Doc said, yes, there's a big gaping legal loophole. He said, if you get the zoning correct and deny them based on the zoning, then there is no loophole. You can go into court with the zoning and show that the county's law says a thing can't be done and it be absolute. As to where a comp plan is more than just, no more than just an idea, a guideline, we have been told repeatedly by those in the county who know the laws and govern this commission the very thing, the comp plan is an idea, a guideline, but the zoning is law. So, we heard the facts again right there in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. However, misconceptions and misleading information is constantly put out on social media with alerts and fear-mongering, which then leads to conspiracy theories. Doc is invaluable to the planning commission because he has a wealth of information on the laws that govern this county and the building and planning areas. He has no agenda, except leading us through the legal processes which we must follow. None of us on planning are given a red cent to make any decision. However, to hear and read comments, it sounds like we're being given money to let a development happen. During a work session on November fourth, twenty twenty-one, Doc stated zoning is what prevents someone who purchases or inherits the property next door to you from turning it into just anything they want, like a tire plant or other things mentioned you don't want. The law does not care what you or your neighbors like personally. What the law cares about is when you're trying to take property rights away by restricting use. The property on Stevens Road was unzoned thanks to that before-emissioned list of names who wanted no zoning. Councilmen and women were pressed to not allow zoning there, even after Doc recommended strongly multiple times that it should be zoned RR at least. Therefore, the subdivision will move through with no problems. The developer has met all their legal requirements. The comp plan does not apply here and the developer is within his legal limits. Had this list of names yet to be seen been more informed, this would not be on the table. Had people listened to the warnings from Doc, things would be different instead of jumping on a bandwagon of misinformation. There is gonna be growth and probably annexation. What can stop it? Maybe zoning. Maybe that would be applicable. So, I would say that had the zoning been changed back in twenty twenty-one, we wouldn't be stirring this pot again. It's as if everyone would be happier if we'd put up gates with fences, said, no, we want no one else here in Edgefield County. So much for that southern hospitality. We have got to accept the inevitable. Growth is gonna happen, especially in that area. However, there are three hundred twenty-five thousand seventy-eight acres in Edgefield County. Two hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred ten of them are rural agriculture or vacant. Seven thousand eight of them are rural, I mean, are residential. I would say rural feel is pretty safe with those numbers. In closing on this item, our comp plan goals are to, number one, promote the availability of a variety of housing types at all cost levels to meet the needs of the community. Number two, to encourage new residential development that preserves neighborhood's identity and quality of life. We are not doing our best for the county by consistently, constantly looking for angles to stop growth in certain inevitable areas targeted for the growth. We need to stop changing the categories and start changing the areas on the maps. Nowhere in the comp plan did I read that we should be restricting seniors from affordable housing with less than a quarter of acre of land, or that a young mother needing affordable housing but can't live in her home county because there's nothing here for her to live in. Not every voice is being heard and not every voice is speaking, but the loudest voices aren't giving the whole picture. Begging people to come to a meeting after you were aware and know the facts when you know unzoned land is prime property for a developer. You also know that the development meets all requirements of the law, which is what planning is supposed to do, follow the law. There is no requirement on subdivisions. Therefore, the comp plan does not apply here. There was no need for the alert emails, scare tactics, and once again, to stop the inevitable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. I guess everyone heard this, and I think we getting some wrong concepts on things that we, we not a enforcement panel up here. We're not an enforcement commission. We up here to do what best for the county and for the people of the county. And as you said, growth, growth coming, and only reading growth will not in some areas because of infrastructure. But we've got, I think, according to what I checked, that I was told, we're way off on housing for, you know, available, affordable housing in this county, that right now.
Well, that's, that's not a county problem. The entire state of South Carolina is about twenty-seven percent short of affordable housing. We have four hundred and fifty-eight units countywide of low-income housing. Both of those are issues that we have to address with our comp plan. Now, that's to say that we have to make space available for it. We don't have to incentivize it, we don't have to build it, but we do have to make space available for things like affordable housing, low-income housing, et cetera, et cetera. As a political subdivision of the state, we can't make any land use completely illegal. We have to have space for everything in the county somewhere. So, you have, somebody comes in, wants to do an apartment complex, there has to be a place somewhere in Edgefield County where an apartment complex can be built. There's also a caveat in the law where if you make something technically infeasible, that is the same thing as making it illegal. So, for example, if you tried to put multifamily housing over here on Moose Creek Road, which is almost in the middle of Sumter National Forest, you've made it technically infeasible. There's no way for them to actually build that there and be successful. So, that's, that's technically infeasible. If you make a conditional use regulation so strict that it practically, practically becomes impossible to accomplish that, you have made it practically impossible. Those sorts of things can get us challenged in court. Generally speaking, with low-income housing, it's not as big. If a developer came in with a low-income housing project and we denied them, they would go to the state and we would be forced to change it. It wouldn't be as big of a legislative issue for us as, you know, say, some other uses. But we are, as a county, supposed to make areas available for all of these things. And I think that our comp plan's categories achieve all of those objectives. We have a category that achieves every thing. The problem is, we have not looked at the map closely enough to identify those areas on the maps and make the necessary changes there. This is a zoning map, so you can ignore that. So, for example, when we get out of this text, we need to really take that map apart and we need to go around Edgefield, we need to go around Johnston. These are the two main areas where we need to focus, you know, how are we supporting the growth of these two towns? Trenton's a very small town. I don't think we want to promote a whole lot of growth in Trenton. Y'all's opinion obviously may differ, but if you moved a high-density housing complex into Trenton, I think Trenton might have a hard time coping with that. However, Edgefield and Johnston could. So, we need to look at Edgefield and Johnston and focus some efforts on changing the maps there. A few of you have also expressed, like Tracy down there, changing some of this to rural agriculture and updating this area of the map. Perfectly fine with that. But what we need to do, just to get some momentum going, the recommended changes of the text that we have gone through for the last two to three months, the items that aren't controversial, just let me know what those items are. If you're good with every change that's been made, just send me that and say, yeah, I'm good with all of these changes. If there's a few that you're not good with, highlight them out, send them to me and say, hey, look, I'd like to discuss this item and this item further. That way, we can go ahead and get a public hearing put together, we can go ahead and get a vote on the items that you all are good with going, and we can just go ahead and get that to council. And that way, we don't just stagnate running over the same paths over and over and over again. I know that a lot of these changes y'all are probably looking at as administrative, like y'all don't care that I updated census tracts and stuff like that. So, those sorts of things, let's just go ahead and get that sent to council and out of the way.
I would like to see a suggestion of those areas, you know, Edgefield and Johnston, did you say, come from the district rep for those areas, because honestly, I'm just not very familiar with Edgefield or Johnston.
So, that'd be District One, Four, and Three. So, I don't want three of y'all in my office at the same time, but if y'all get with April and-
And we'll go to her office.
Just go to, go to her office and let her know, no, I'm just kidding. Just, just get with us and let us know when y'all want to stop by. As the representative of those areas, of course, y'all's opinion will carry the most weight, not only with council, but also with the other members of, of the planning commission. But the planning commission, even though you do have district seats, you serve the county as a whole, it's not just, you know, your vote doesn't just affect your district, your vote affects the entire county. So, if you have opinions on the map, regardless of where they are, let me know, because ultimately, those changes won't be met until you vote on it anyway. So, I don't want to, I don't want to potentially miss one of y'all's changes just because I, I didn't get the correct communication. So, schedule a meeting with April, sit down, we'll get some laminate maps if you want to draw on it, and we'll sit down and get those in. But the text, any text changes you want, let's go ahead and get that sent off and get that done with. Maps can take a while. The citizenry often like to get involved in map changes. We end up having, I don't, not all of you were here during the last comp plan rewrite, but it can get very exciting very quickly when you start changing the map. So, we'll get your ideas, we'll put the maps together, we'll go ahead and get them out to the public, but it'll take time for that review process to occur. So, let's get the text stuff done and sent off.
My opinion, our problem is that we thought our private walls, it don't work. You don't fight a private wall. You know, you, you gotta, you know. When we, as Doc say, you got, if we have something, go in and check with him, but don't, just don't jump the gun and take it and run with it. You can't do that. You can't do that. I mean, we shouldn't basically. And we got to, keep in mind, I've got, I've changed my opinion about a lot of stuff, I've been around here forty years on this thing. It, it been rough going, but I've come to the conclusion that sometimes we got to be in some, we talking about distance and so forth. A young couple coming up now is catching it. Catching it. You're catching it, you know, you know, I talked about space and all, I've been going around the state and other counties and so forth looking, and sometimes we just gonna have to deal with because a, a family starting out now, buying a house, paying for a car, raising children, is catching, you know, what. It, it tough for them, and we, and we don't need to put any more burden on them than what we really have. And we got to make it affordable. And we talking about people here and that, but we, we got to prevent the problem by, you know, building a little building or something, we got to be flexible or something. It, it not, it's some stuff I don't like in neighborhood, if somebody bought a lot next to me with any reason, it's something I got to deal with. I mean, it's just life, if we gonna do it. It's what we got to do, and, and this is the problem we having. Not right now, housing, it costs ten, fifteen thousand dollars just to buy the average eighteen-hundred-feet house, ain't that right? You know, I remember when I was building houses for four and five thousand dollars, but see, now things have changed, we can't, and, and, and right then, we thought, but now, we got to look at what can afford, we don't want to drive people away and we don't want to bring junk in, but still, we got to make it flexible for the citizens of this county. And people got family lots and so forth, which we've got something that made it rough for family to divide that land because of regulation, you know, that your parent left you inheritance land, so you can't even use it for your own family. So, we got to keep all this in mind, and our decision that we made, we got to come to reality. It's no set thing, it's an American dream, that's all it is, they dream. It's just a dream, and it not gonna come true in the state we going. We, we realize the condition that we in, so we got to use common sense, that we make our decision inside what we doing, work together on it, and not make a big mountain out of a molehill. This is my opinion. Did you have a comment?
Before you close this meeting, I just want to say, I appreciate some of your remarks, but I also just want to say, whatever vision that you come up with in the comp plan, it doesn't, when you take the citizens' comments, when you put it all together and you meet the requirements of the law and put it in the comp plan, just pass the laws required to give yourself the teeth to back it up.
Right.
It does us no good to plan for something and then not put laws- It does us no good to plan for something and then not put laws in place. If you don't put the laws in place and somebody goes against what you want to happen, what, what are we as an enforcement agency going to do about it? I cannot send the sheriff to go arrest somebody for not breaking the law. It's that simple. I mean, at the end of the day, you can plan all you want to, but if you have no teeth, if you have no laws in place that people have to follow, you've done nothing at all, except plan. You, you have to give yourself the legal tools to, to actually enforce it. That, that's about all I really have to say.
Doc, there was a parcel of land that we talked about, putting some zoning on.
A parcel?
Parcels, all the way up to Indian. I guess we'll talk about it next month.
Yeah, we'll get, we got to get the comp plan right first, but you're talking about all of this property right here. I think this is Indian Ridge. Yeah, that's Indian Ridge right there.
If we can add that to the agenda for next month.
We can. There's also the option, you know, I know some people don't like our existing zoning categories because some of them are use restrictive. There's no legal requirement for you to put use restrictions in zoning. You can have a zoning district that does nothing but create a lot size requirement. That's, that's perfectly legal. You can permit everything except industrial. Obviously, we want industry to be focused in industrial areas, but other than industry, you can leave use wide open. You don't have to restrict the use of land in a zoning district. You don't have to set extensive setbacks. You don't have to set extensive buffer yard requirements. You can make a zoning district as simple as you want it to be.
This time, we going to, let me get everybody to come in. We're going to join for about three or four minutes, and we're going to have a regular meeting. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Jam up.
How long will you live there? Did you hear me when I spoke? Did you hear what I said when I spoke? That because of nineteen sixty-seven, I twenty came through, that area was primed for growth. That would be a, a Department of Transportation, yes.
Yes, ma'am. See, they, they not keep, they haven't killed with time.
No. We can't plan. Yeah. We can't do anything about roads, you know, planning roads, that's not our thing. Planning houses is, and this one... No, no. It'll... It will have some on it.
Yes, some, yeah.
Yes, some.
Some for them. It may, see, it may, it may require them to put in, like a turning lane.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm talking about for the neighborhood. Yes, ma'am, so, yeah. Well, no, what I, for that, what they would do, they would do a study of the area. And that's why, you ever run across those little black tubes across the road, they're, they're counting how, the number of cars, the frequency, the times, and that's DOT. But what they will do is, just say that they, they knew the number of homes and vehicles coming to this area. DOT will do a study, and they may or may not require them to put in a three-hundred-foot turning lane, a four-hundred-foot turning lane, whatever, for them. And so, if you have other neighborhoods that have grown and they have that issue, that would be something you could take out with the Department of Transportation, and they may go in and do a study and, and put in those turning lanes. And see, and everybody wants to be in Meriwether because they have a good school district. And so, they're coming out of, you know, parts of Georgia, you know, Macon, Georgia, those surrounding areas, and they're like, hey, Meriwether's a top-notch school with a top-notch football team, so it's gonna happen. But the, the difference between with the commission, like with their job and these current neighborhoods where DOT would have required them to build a turning lane, whereas DOT would have to come in and build one in any of the other circumstances. So, and they may go up and make them do road improvements two or three miles up the road from it. There'll be certain standards, but they wouldn't be able to get into that because of the cost of everything until they were moving forward, because they'll do a engineering study, they'll do a road DOT study, D-HEC, South Carolina environmental studies on that type of place.
So, it, it really, you know, sometimes it takes four, five years that, that they plan to do it. Like almost, yeah, if they came up with it, like you said, the, the development, I have to get paid for what it'll take to do it.
Nobody puts a baby in the corner.
They probably gonna get worried too, probably.
DOT would be the ones, with them.
Nah, I think you probably check at the Greenwood, this district, Greenwood, at the Greenwood, DOT, they, they, they control this district here. Yes, ma'am, and you talk to some of those guys and...
Kind of first in law, but whether we get along with the money, we're still going.
I like that.
But you know, they were looking, if you were to buy my land and build my house right now, you would have...
You know where, you know where, you know where Paul reinstated that?
Yeah.
The house right next to him, Elizabeth Dove. I built that house in seventy-two for twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was the first guy to pull up, and Mr. Paul got shot. And I pulled in, and they had just shot him.
I think I was down there calling, me, I was down there on the, around the wall, he was somewhere.
Now, where do you, you live then?
I live there, that side of town. And then I got placed on branch, too.
Yeah. We, you know, I'm, you know, Tony Williams.
Oh, me, Tony.
Yeah, I live, I bought his old house, a two-story brick house. And then I bought Bob Ryan's old house a while ago. Down, just down on the right from me. And, uh, bought a couple houses over there, uh, based on Officer Sandro, uh, the lady that was sitting Dexter on him. Dexter rides the horse on it all the time.
Doc, I'm ready when you ready. Hey, how you doing?
Doing good, buddy.
Good, see, you look good.
You looking really good.
I'm hanging in there.
You're good for a sixty-five-year-old man.
I wish I was sixty-five, but I sure, I shot with joy.
Somebody told me the other day, they said they were turning sixty-two. He said, I'm celebrating the thirty-second anniversary of my thirtieth birthday.
God, and then she's been out sixty-two, I was jumping out of airplanes every night.
Oh, yeah.
That was, I was a roof builder, I was, I was a bridge, road, just front of the building there, God, none of that.
I have a, a brother-in-law, my daddy retired out of the Army, I have a brother-in-law that retired as Army Ranger. And then another brother-in-law that was Green Army. You talking about a different breed of humans. Like, he, he never sleeps. And he's like, where they trained out of, he's like... But he'll go in, and he'll say, I'm gonna take a nap a little bit, and he'll sit on the couch, hang thirty seconds. For fifteen minutes, he wakes up, and it's all, it's kind of, just, just crazy.
At this time, we going to go into our meeting, planning commission meeting, official meeting where we vote and so forth on the August tenth, ten twenty-three. At this time, we're gonna call to all of our invocation, heaven and father, we thank you for the opportunity for, once again, for it together here at this spot, and we pray that you guide us, that we keep in order and in decent in what we do and what we're planning, and that we keep others in mind, not be selfish about it, but do what best for this county. Guide us and keep it in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Let me lead. Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the middle, to liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I should introduce a motion for approval of August tenth agenda for tonight.
Make the motion.
Motion, second, all in favor, right hand, hold the eyes, have it. I need approval for the amendments, wet session for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion? Second. Okay, I got second. All in favor, right hand? I need approval for the July thirteenth meeting minutes. Motion? Second. All in favor, right hand? Okay, all right. No guest speakers. We have a public hearing, this portion of the planning commission, regular meeting, allow a comment from citizen regarding the public hearing island on the agenda during the regular meeting, which is we have on today, and, uh... Yep, okay. Anybody, who has signed up for this meeting, you have some sign up?
Scott Cooper.
Scott Cooper, enough. Each citizen, you should be able to speak for a maximum of five minutes. All citizens which speak during the public meeting should be subject to recognition by the presiding officer and address us when you come up, just state your name and, uh, stay on the subject. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Scott Cooper. I reside at three forty-two Sweetwater Road. And I, I just came tonight to commend Blue Sky for, for both the work they have already executed at Anderson Point as well as Sweetwater Landing. Two recent developments in the Sweetwater community, two different properties targeting two different markets, both of which are needed in Edgefield County. As a neighbor to both neighborhoods, I've had the privilege of getting to know residents, new residents in both communities, and all I've, all I have spoken with love the product that they received in those communities. Anderson Point, which was controversial at the time, previously had been unproductive hayfield for over three decades. You can speak to local farmers if you want about the soils and agricultural activity there if you want to. This area did not have access to sewer at the time of development. Sweetwater Landing, while it might have been better, had it had access to sewer, previously had also been relatively unproductive piece of property. Each of these areas now have thriving, young families, which our community needs. So, I simply wanted to say thank you to Blue Sky for helping Edgefield County gain new citizens and new taxpayers who are contributing to and love our community. I believe the future two hundred and fifty-three families who will reside in Tressel Run will also become an asset to Edgefield County. The one thing that I would like the Thompsons to help with, or Blue Sky, in coordination with other companies who are developing in Edgefield County, and this is where you all come in, as well as property owners, I believe there's seven between their property and Edgefield, is helping to extend the North Augusta Greenway to Edgefield along the rail bed adjacent to this proposed development. Such a project would bring economic benefits to our entire county, including the Sweetwater area, including the new future residents of Tressel Run. Thank you.
April, who next?
So, I can't really read the name. One forty Sandy Springs Road, Kathy.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Eckery, one forty Sandy Springs Road. I have concerns that don't get addressed when I come to these meetings, particularly your dissertation on why we should be making laws instead of comprehensive plan. How many houses now are going to be accessed on Stevens Road? This will not be the first development there. Stevens Road, I agree, is a dangerous, winding, tiny, little rural road, and the way it looks to me, it's going to be three or four massive housing developments. What about school buses? Who, who determines if a police car could go down? Where is the parking? Is it gonna be a one-car driveway for each one of these properties? Will there be curbing? Will the road be widened? Will Stevens Road be able to accommodate? The high school's right there. I mean, is money going to be always the driving force for Edgefield County? We need quality. We don't need large numbers. We need quality housing, we need quality lots, we need quality infrastructure, we need the sewers, we need the water, we need the gas, we need the electricity. We have to provide that as county residents, and I understand that, and we do need development. But just to look at Stevens Road, just that one little area, and you've got these huge developments on both sides of the roads, up here, over here, over yonder, I mean, what's traffic gonna be like? Where's the red lights gonna go? How, how the school bus is gonna run? It's just, uh, it boggles my mind. The safety aspect of it boggles my mind. We get these developments, they bulldoze everything down, they just started on Heritage right there at Bettis Academy. Their buffer zone is about four little trees from Highway twenty-five right to the edge. That doesn't speak buffer to me. Everything else is stripped down to the clay dirt, everything. And then, these big, complex, huge developments get put in, and they have access to this one little road that comes in and out, and you got all these families, most families have more than one car, so they park where? Where, where's it gonna, where's the parking gonna be? It's, to me, it's just not conducive for rural county living to put these big complexes in and then expect everybody just to cope. Once the builder gets through and they pocket their money, that's it, you know? They're, they're... They're, they're, it's over with in just a few short years, they're done. You know, hopefully the properties will sell, hopefully you can find people that'll want to be there, but Stevens Road is just, according to the, the current, that map and the current issues that you've got developing, you've got lots and lots of houses, not just Tressel Run, that are gonna be coming up in that one little teeny, dangerous, wide street. So, it's a high school, are we gonna provide sidewalks, curbing? Are we going to have anything to help regulate high school traffic? Is that burden gonna be with the sheriff's department now, to get traffic safely in and out of the high school areas? So those are some of the things that I don't hear on planning, I mean, it may not be part of the comprehensive plan, but I, I would think it should be, and it's, uh, all about, seems to me, fear of being sued. Well, big deal, if we get sued, fight it, if we need to, but we should be thinking about safety, and decent housing, and something that is not so ugly, like Betis Academy Road is the ugliest area ever seen being developed in Aitken County. And if you haven't been down to Graniteville and Betis Academy Road, you need to, 'cause it is just horrible, thank you.
Amen.
Jay Garrison. Hello, my name's Jake Garrison, I live in one ninety-one Sweetwater Creek Drive. I just wanted to make sure I was coming and clarify that, I think, uh, a couple of years ago, or whatever, we were talking about the zoning and make sure we had a good comprehensive plan, just to remind, there's probably maybe more people may feel that way, and make sure you're keeping lot sizes, keeping it more of rural, I understand your point, about to have my ninth child, I know how tough it is, I could argue with anybody. But I don't think it's just for me, I have to deal with what I have to deal with. I appreciate y'all wanting to keep taxes down, that'd be great, but just make sure, encouraging y'all to remember the, keep it rural as possible, development is good, but make sure y'all are using, um, have a good game plan. I know we talked about having ordinances, and I'd like to say that limit, that was what we were fighting a couple of years ago, and had those been put in place, to where we don't have to, you know, worry about this kind of stuff? Or do we have to now zone to kind of cover, in a minimum zoning, I heard you said you could do something like that, but I just want to make sure, I was confused a little bit about the, while we're sitting here, so many developments are going in, are we still, is it still fitting our plan of larger acre sizes and keeping it more of a rural, rural community? So I just want to make sure, I still remember reminding y'all, that's kind of what we had, the, all that was about zoning a couple of years ago, is keeping it a more rural s- community. So, I said, I just want to make sure I, I was popping my head up.
I appreciate you, thank you.
And that's everyone that signed up for the public hearing.
Okay. No more, we, uh, closing, that we thank you for your input, taking all that into consideration. You ha- you don't have any reports either? No reports, okay. No old business, I believe. Now we're down to, uh, our new business tonight, uh, vote on land development applications submitted by Blue Sky, priorities for the, the pole major subdivision located off Dean Road on Potica one twenty-five. Got two Poticas there, zero six seven, zero thirteen, zero five seven, for a total of ninety-seven point four acres. This is major subdivision proposed by, uh, Blue Sky here in, uh, development, in force, compliance.
Fab.
Yeah.
Can you hold one second? Apparently we had a emailed, um, comment, uh, don't want to, don't want to miss it. Um, so I'm going to insert this into the public hearing, um...
Okay.
Becker and Eubanks family. My family has lived in Edgefield County for over six generations, we love Edgefield and the people of Edgefield. Living in a small village town, surrounded by nature, is such a part of our culture and heritage, it breaks my heart to see developers and chains wanting to take over. Once we sell out, we will never get it back. I am a real estate agent, so this decision and lifestyle comes at a personal financial loss. I choose to help the people of Edgefield regardless of potential profit, and I hope our elected officials feel the same way. I have lived outside of Edgefield in Columbia, Philadelphia, and New Jersey. When I had the opportunity to come back home, I had a renewed sense of love for my community and desire to preserve and protect it for myself and future generations. Trust me, we do not want to live in a concrete jungle, overpopulated or full of crime. The motto on our website is, it feels different here because it is different here. This will only remain true if we preserve the environment and values that we currently and have historically held. Please protect the people of Edgefield and the beautiful green space and nature that we all love. If I can be of any assistance, serving on committees or anything, to voice my concerns and that of others, please let me know. And then she put a picture of a, um, housing complex that's next to a farmer's field, and there's a tractor behind it plowing the field. And her full name is Autumn Eubanks. I'll pass this along, so y'all can see the picture, but...
All right, thank you.
Sorry to disrupt you.
No problem, it's, it comments, uh, makes sense. The, uh... So we're looking at, uh, this subdivision that we've, we're talking about now, it seemed that, uh, they, uh, in compliance when it come to, uh, the use, permitted use there, remember lot size and compliance of that? Application process, compliance. Kind of comprehensive density is not compliant, but on the issue of kind of comprehensive plan, the Poticas proposed for development have been designated as suburban density, rather density. While single-family units are compliant with the comprehensive plan, this designated, that designation has suggested that we have a zero point five point five two, five to two unit per acre regardless of, regarding it. And proposed this development with a total of two hundred and fifty-four lots, has a distance around two point five units per acre. And, uh, this is looking at the comprehensive plan, which is not law, but it's a guidelines, a guideline for it to follow. And, uh, I think been approved, they pending approval for the stone water, they, uh, approved by D H waste water control, it's gonna be on, on a sewer. And, uh, the tap has been approved, then you got what Dominion, you working with, everything underground planned on that, okay? And then we talked about DOT and project, that pending approval on that. And, uh, they got other things that probably need to, uh, be checked on as well. I see, uh, they got, they've, they've talked about the fifty-foot green space between adjacent properties and so forth, they're gonna have a HOA established, responsibility to be the main of all the green space and the come, for that type, lot size and so forth. Any comments on the floor, so many about it on this panel?
Okay, so, I think I've said this before, earlier, I asked Doc, were there any major subdivisions, which is what y'all are presenting, a major subdivision, um, now in our county, that have a mixed-use element, and he said, no, there aren't any. And the reason why is because you can, because it's not zoned, you're presenting a, a mixed-use... Under a major subdivision, right? So, I get it. Um, I have a lot of issues with the safety of Stevens Road. And while I'm not DOT and I can't decide, I do see in our ordinances, section twenty-four one sixty-four, and it talks about zoned and unzoned areas, and talks about the design. Um, it encourages, it, it literally says, the purpose of this article is to advance the objectives of South Carolina Local Planning Enabling Act of nineteen ninety-four, to require harmonious, orderly, progressive development of land in pursuit of public health and safety, and that's where I have an issue with this road, I have an issue with the safety. Number three, it goes down to ensure the adequate provisions of the safe and convenient travel access and circulation, both vehicular and pedestrian, in and through new land developments. This is section twenty-four point six four of our ordinance. This doesn't do that. Um, number five, to ensure in general the wise and timely development of new areas in harmony, in harmony with the comp plan, is in section twenty-four dash one sixty-four. And it is for zoned and unzoned areas. So, section twenty-four one sixty-six, it talks about the ability of the road to serve the safety and convenience of the expected user citizen. Um, it talks about the circulation design road system shall be designed to permit the safe and efficient orderly movement of traffic. There again, Stevens is an issue. The arrangements of roads will be such as will not cause hardships to owners of adjoining properties or general public in providing ingress and egress. That road is horrible. DOT has already told me that there is a, the driveway spacing has not been met for this, apparently. Um, but here's the real part that the attorneys will like. Section twenty-four dash five in our ordinances, regulations applicable to zoned and unzoned areas of the county. Section three, twenty-four sixty-six, townhouse projects. You click on twenty-four sixty-six and it takes you to townhouse projects. Number seven, Doc mentioned earlier, the maximum size units per acre. But the density shall not exceed the maximum allowed per the land use area of Edgefield County Comprehensive Plan. It says zoned and unzoned in section twenty-four dash five. Townhouses. This is for zoned and unzoned townhouses. The townhouse element does not meet our comp plan. That's all I got.
Bobby, you have anything?
Um, well, I, I was, um, searching to see, um, what other, um, counties may have denied a major subdivision based on their comp plan alone in an unzoned area, and in, uh, twenty twenty-one, Greenville County lost a lawsuit because they approved a development on unzoned land that violated their comp plan. And so I feel confident that with this project not being compliant with our comp plan, I feel confident in not being in favor of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm Andrew Reen, I'm the county attorney, I've been to meetings in the past, but most of you haven't, I haven't seen in quite a while, so I'm glad to be here. I do want to let you know there are court cases around the state on this. A few weeks ago, there were cases in Georgetown, where basically Georgetown said that the comprehensive plan is just a general guideline and that is not used for implementing zoning decisions, that you have to use the zoning, the ordinances, and that the comprehensive plan is just an overriding idea and everything, and so they're, they're...
I, I, I'm aware, I... I, I, I'm aware of a couple of other cases, and it, to me, it seems like with the different South Carolina Circuit Court judges disagreeing on the interpretation, that maybe it's time for it to go to the South Carolina Supreme Court.
Supreme Court has not had a decision on this.
Yeah, so it, it looks like we need some cases to take to the Supreme Court, 'cause we need a firm opinion on how to apply it, the comp plan.
I would like to say, um, this comp plan started, I can't remember the exact year, uh, but it was originally called the Vision twenty twenty, and it's when two thousand twenty seemed far away. I think it started around, Mr. Burt, you may remember the year that started. There was a group of us, um, early two thousands that met at Piedmont Tech for months. Um, came down to a group of twelve, developed a comprehensive plan. My problem with this project is, first of all, the Meriwether Sweetwater area is the hot seat in the county. Because we've had such an explosion of growth in that area. I think those of us that have been here for quite some time, or as in my case, my whole life, we do not ever want to see that end of the county become an extension of North Augusta. Um, we cannot stop growth, and nobody wants to do that, but the density is a large issue, um, and it needs to be controlled growth. We don't want to be North Augusta, and we do not want to be Columbia County. It has to be planned. We started that plan twenty-five years ago, when today seemed like it was a long time down the road, and here we all are. Um... I understand affordable housing for families, I have a young child, I, I get that. But I'm not okay with this project being presented as if it's a, some philanthropic endeavor that we're providing affordable housing for the county, because it is not. It, like everything else, it's for profit. Um, and I don't feel like the profit of a developer should be at the expense of our county.
You, you, you think, okay, you, you'll come in? Come in. Okay, Bobby. Uh, well, we have, before she had, uh, we, uh, explaining and... It receive automatic approval on the tenth, right? If we don't, you know, automatic approval. And, uh, it meets, uh, a compliance on basis, this was per, 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 excuse me, preliminary plat, it's, it's, it's the, and, uh, under the second amendment we have, and we just got the issue and all, uh... My, my recommendation is that we, uh, approve it conditionally, if you got any condition, put the condition there, we'll negotiate on that, but, uh, that's my, you know, so, uh, if someone want to give me a motion, then we'll vote on it. Second? Okay, we make the motion to approve preliminary plat, what it is, so, all in favor of approval, raise your right hand. Opposers? So, we got four and three. Motion did not, did not pass, so, uh, that's that. That's that. It's in your hands now. All righty. Let's see, uh... I don't have anything else about it. Give me a motion to adjourn. Motion second, John, appreciate everybody coming.